Mr. Mayor and members of the council, as a result of the closed session just concluded, no action was taken required to be reported.
Thank you Carl. This evening I have the privilege of doing the invocation and I selected an item here out of a book that I somewhat enjoy reading on occasion and this particular one is by Ann Hood. "When You're Struggling Over a Difficult Decision." I thought my fellow council members might also be able to appreciate this one. "My best advice to you is to give it the rocking chair test. Imagine that you're 90 years old." That's a sweet Lord. Sitting on the porch and rocking in your chair as you reflect back on your life. Will you regret doing this or not doing it? Pick the decision you can live with and have no regrets in your choice. Believe in the choices you make." And again by Ann Hood and I thought that was somewhat inspirational. Ladies and gentlemen, we are called to order. May we have roll call please?
Councilmember Ender?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Mayor Pretim Ferry?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Mayor Keller?
Here.
Thank you.
At this time we'll have the flag salute. I'm gonna ask a question. That young man wearing an LA Dodger hat there, would he feel comfortable? Would you be comfortable leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
You can do that. Please stand. Come forward to the mic, son, and give us your name.
Shane.
Come on up Shane. Shane and he's gonna lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job Shane.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He'll never sit in the front row again. Okay, we have a couple of things we're gonna do tonight under awards and recognition. We have the Santa Clarita Valley Sheriff's Station haunted jailhouse and Lorene, I believe you're gonna help us with that.
My privilege, Mayor. It's been a long time coming. The city's, the city of Santa Clarita is going to recognize the founders tonight of the city's haunted jailhouse which is held annually at the Santa Clarita Valley Sheriff's Station. As a matter of fact, this Sunday, October 26th, will be a thrilling haunted jailhouse, just like past events and it's always a wonderful thing for our kids to be able to go through this and bring their families. It's just an amazing thing. If you haven't been, please take your kids over there on Sunday, October 26th and really enjoy this with your kids because it's a lot of fun. But tonight, we're gonna honor the gentleman that started this and this is the 19th consecutive year that the haunted jailhouse has taken place in Santa Clarita. And originally Leon Warden, who was the man that first brought the idea to Captain, our then Chief of Police, Captain Bob Spear, and then Deputy Patrick Rissler and the late Sergeant Bob Warford and they worked together with Jim Ventress of the Boys and Girls Club to put this event on every year throughout all of the past 19 years. We are grateful to these men. They have done an outstanding job. It's a wonderful opportunity for our kids to have an incredible experience, get scared to death of the jailhouse and be safe at the same time. So I'd like to ask all of these gentlemen, Leon Warden, Captain Bob Spear, Deputy Patrick Rissler and Jim Ventress to come up on the podium.
It is a wonderful experience. I've gotta really thank everybody you see up here in particular for the founding of this thing. Leon Warden came to me, said he wanted to help us as he knew we were trying to find a way to better connect with the community and I asked Leon if he could come up with some ideas because he's a very bright guy and he came up with a bunch of them that cost a whole bunch of money and I said, "Well, we don't really have a budget." So he said, "I've got an idea." And he pitched the idea of the haunted jailhouse. Outstanding, outstanding idea. And I said, "Well, how can we do that without money?" And he said, "Well, how about contacting Jim Ventress?" So I turned the community relations staff loose, Pat Rissler and Bob Warford, who passed away a while ago, and it ended up being a wonderful event and I know the folks from Magic Mountain even told us they wished that they had people willing to stand in line as long as we had. So it worked out really well and I hope you all get a chance to come and see it.
I just wanna remember Bob Warford because that guy was very special to us and that's all I even need to say.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
We will be presenting to Pat Warford, Bob Warford's wife, a scroll to make sure that the family knows that we, he was honored and how much we appreciate the effort that he put in. So many of our children are so much safer because we have an event like this to take them to. It's the only time I've been through a haunted house that I actually really jumped out of my skin going through. I'm sure it was done specially just to get me to scream and it worked, so take the kids over and have a good time with it.
Thank you Lorene. I'm gonna take the pleasure of making the next recognition if I may. Tonight, the city of Santa Clarita is pleased to recognize Hart District for its outstanding test scores. The district's academic performance index has increased to 804, which is above the 800-point goal set by the state for all schools and districts on a scale of 200 to 1,000 to eventually reach. Ten of Hart District schools also scored above the 800 mark and a number of the others are rapidly approaching the 800 figure as well. The overall score of 804 places Hart District as the highest scoring union high school district in the state with 10,000 students or more. I'd like to now recognize a few of the Hart District individuals for their personal role in the Hart District's success and ask you to please come forward and we'll begin by our superintendent, Jamie Costellanos. Jamie, please come forward. Board President Gloria Mercado Fortine. Gloria, you're here. Steve Sturgeon. Steve with us tonight? I don't see Steve. Paul Strickland. Paul, come on up. Dennis King? Dennis with us? And Pat Hanren? Is she here? She's not here either. Okay. We want to thank you for your commitment to advancing the academic scores of the city of Santa Clarita and congratulations to the staff, students and parents who have remained focused. I'm still reading back here today. Academic achievement. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll present to the lady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You betcha. Gloria. Get over here Gloria so we can go. One of the things you have to do is the right... There you go.
You know, I just, oh, thank you. How are you Shane? I just want to thank the council and everyone here, but especially the city council for really recognizing the great achievement that our students and teachers and parents, because we're all partners, and your recognition means a lot to us. You know, we partner with the city in so many things and so you also benefit from our kids doing such a great job. So really from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you for this recognition and we know that people come to Santa Clarita because of our great schools and that is also inclusive of our elementary schools, our elementary, our high school district and our wonderful College of the Canyons. So thank you.
Thank you Gloria.
I am gonna quickly just piggyback on President Mercado's message. This coming November, they have a school bond out. I know they believe there's a direct correlation between facilities and students pride in their campuses, the number of students on campus and expanding both theaters and building new schools. So I know coming up here, just like we did a few years ago, there's an opportunity once again to vote for a school bond that'll keep us number one in the state. So I believe all five council members here are supportive and on behalf of us and all parents out there, if we want to stay ahead of all these other districts like we're celebrating tonight, then as a community, we have to get behind our schools. So come November, let's all support our Hart School District when they come out for their bond in order to increase our facilities and improve student achievement.
Most appropriate. I just want to say I also, and I think maybe another council member and perhaps I'll leave it up to the individuals, have come on board to support the Williams Hart School District for their bond. I know I'm certainly delighted to do so and Sharon Frank's encouragement for all of our citizens to support our schools is critically important. We never can give enough attention to our schools and we have to be there for them. I would invite other council members, if you are comfortable with it, maybe you could draft a letter and forward it to the Williams Hart School District so perhaps they can use it if you're comfortable with it. Okay? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item now if we may and this is under our public safety topic of the month. I'm gonna invite Deputy Chief Tripp to come forward and I think Stephanie English, you're coming also. Is Stephanie out there? We always enjoy seeing Stephanie and Fire Safety and Smoke Alarm Awareness Month and Deputy Chief, we really appreciate you taking time out and joining us tonight. You too Stephanie.
Mayor Keller, thank you and council, thank you for having us. Well, this has been on the agenda and all year long, public safety and the timing is really unique because we of course have luckily not in Santa Clarita, but in surrounding communities been hit substantially by fire, so the timing is really good to get our message out there again. We just want to remind the community, this is Fire Preparedness Month, to be vigilant. We appreciate that this community is very compliant with brush clearance. Just keep your eyes and ears open when the winds are up. Look around and be careful. One of the things that we experienced in these fires was very successful evacuations and we really appreciate that when residents evacuate. It helps the firefighters do their jobs and do protect the houses and get a lot of structure protection in there. A lot of times we see structure fires from cooking on the stove, overdone electrical outlets and with the holidays coming up, we'd like to just remind the community to also be careful about candles in the home and lighting on Christmas trees. It's about the year of the buckwheat incident, so it's again, it's a good time and good reminder. I know the city has just brought forth an emergency text program and I understand there's 1,700 people in the community who have already signed up for that. The fire department's very supportive of that. We think it's a really good way to keep residents informed, get messages if you're out of town or even in town very quickly, so we encourage that as well. This Saturday at Fire Station 124 in Stevenson's Ranch, we would like to extend an invitation for everyone to come out to what we're calling Living in the Fire Zone. Of course, we all know here in Santa Clarita that we have a lot of fire hazards, so we would like to invite the community out, learn more about how you can protect your family, your home. A lot of fire personnel will be on board. This is a, this is a unique opportunity to really learn more than ever before about fire behavior and, and structure protection and things that really are a little bit more in-depth than we may have offered in the past from fire department personnel. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce our Deputy Chief John Tripp, who has responsibility for our north region, which goes from Altadena all the way up to Lancaster, numerous cities, numerous fire stations, numerous personnel, and he'll give you a brief update on the fires that are out there and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you Stephanie. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight. It's been a busy few days. I'm currently the incident commander down on the Merrick Fire. The Merrick Fire started about 2:00 in the morning on Sunday and it rapidly pushed into Cagle Canyon and threatened, we had to evacuate 400 homes and 1,200 residents out of that canyon in the middle of the night. And with that cooperation of the Sheriff's Department and Los Angeles PD, we were able to do that. Fire burned pretty intensely all day and the winds let up a little bit. We had 19 helicopters on the fire during the day and we were flying our helicopters, LA County and LA City at night, trying to fight the fire with wind gusts up to 60 miles an hour. The fire laid down a bit. We had a lot of good aggressive firefighting and we had it somewhat contained, but then all of a sudden the wind came back Monday with blowing it about 70 miles an hour and it blew it into a trailer park in Lopez Canyon and we lost unfortunately about 38 homes, or 38 mobile homes. But firefighters from this area, from La Cañada, from all the front country, basically all the San Fernando Valley, from Lancaster and Palmdale, we brought them in in a code R response and we were able to save a third of that mobile home, of that mobile home park. The fire then pushed down into Solmar and if the winds had come up last night like predicted, we thought the fire was gonna go to the 5 freeway and probably damaged or destroyed a number of homes along that Solmar interface. The reason why I bring this all up is because it's, it's just like again, last year and usually we haven't had seizures historically like this. The last, we had one 70, 1970, we had one 78, but in current history, we had it in 2003 when we started the fire siege type of business and now it looks like we're gonna do it every year. So these fire, living in the fire zone, we're trying to get that message out to the public that if we're gonna be up in the foothills and we're gonna live in areas that are covered with chaperone, we have to have a plan. We have to have a plan individually. We have to have a plan as a community. Just last week, Mr. Pulse Camp, Mr. Strickland, Captain Labarche and myself, my staff and the sheriff's staff, we sat down and our number one priority is evacuating people. People wonder why we get so precautious about that is because fire does come real fast and it does take people's homes sometimes and we do not want to have any kind of fatalities on these fires. Unfortunately, we had a civilian that was trapped and he passed away during this last fire down here on Solmar. We've got another fire going, still going. Last night, we predicted it was gonna go all the way to the Pacific Ocean if we had gotten those 70 mile an hour winds. So I'm being very frank, I'm being very direct about this because this is the type of environment we live in and I want to make sure that that message is out there, that we have to be prepared. We have to be prepared as individuals and we have to be prepared as a community. I think as a community, this community is being very proactive about that. Last year, there was a, you know, a tremendous amount of evacuations and firefighting resources we brought up here to try to save people's homes. Unfortunately, we did have some consumed, but we did save hundreds of homes just like we did in the last 48 hours. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything about what just happened or what we are preparing for.
Counsel?
I just wanted to mention, last year when I was mayor, we were going through the fires here and it was very, very frightening and the fires that are happening now just bring back those frightening memories and I, and I know people in my neighborhood were very, very nervous and I just can't thank you enough on behalf of all of us, to the, all of the firefighters out there watching it. We see how you do save homes and if there's something lost, it's very miniscule amount compared to what could be if we didn't have the best firefighters in the state and whoever comes to our, to our rescue. And we as a city are prepared and I thank Ken Pulse Camp and our staff for that, but it is a frightening time and people do need to be aware and follow the hints that are given on how you can be prepared if you have to leave your home in just a flash like that and it's not only fires, we're faced with other disasters as well and it never hurts to be prepared. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. On the firefighters, we have about 200, between the two fires, we have about 450 fire engines as far away as Yuba City. So it is a statewide, there's 30,000 firefighters in the state. We sent approximately 500 firefighters from our department up north when they had the fire seizure and the lightning and again, they made their trip down south. So it is a statewide effort. We, we're very proud of our department, but it's also that great cooperation we have with our federal and our state brothers and sisters that help us out.
Lorene, did you have something?
I, I just really would like to thank the fire department for the excellent job you've done in working and training different areas of the community on how to prepare and that information is available through the city and through the county on getting prepared, how you plant around your house, things that you need to do to prepare for when there is a fire, places to meet your family, communication skills, just the way you have your car parked in your driveway. And I know last year, Sand Canyon had a really bad fire and they had worked with the fire department, with the Fire Safe Council and they taught them how to actually prepare to stay in place because so many of them have large animals and how to stay in place and be fire safe and they got through it and did a great job and it was the guidance and leadership from the fire department and training the people that made it such a success and I'd like to see us do more of that and we appreciate everything that you can share and help us learn to do so we can make your job easier, but our hearts go out in our thanks to you over and over again.
Thank you. On the large animals, again, that planning, the people that have large animals, they definitely have to have a plan of either sheltering in place or being able to transport a large animal long before the fire comes. So that's something that I want to make sure that, I know in that Sand Canyon area, we have a lot of large animals, that we just want to make sure that everybody has a plan up there. This fire, we committed Sunday morning to put DA bulldozers on the top end of this fire because what usually happens after a wind event is that the wind pushes south, the fire goes south. Well, then we get the switch and the fire comes back north. That's what happened on the Simi Fire back when it came towards Stevenson Ranch in 2003 and that would have brought it right up Bear Divide and right down into Sand Canyon and we had that planning going on Sunday night because we saw that potential. So even though it's over there, it can be over here.
I met some people this weekend, this past weekend, who live in Hermosa Beach and, and they said, "Where do you, where do you live?" And I said, "Santa Clarita." And they said, "Oh, the place with all the fires." And I thought, wow, I'd not heard that before, so we're famous for another strange thing. But we were talking about the fires and evacuations and it's been interesting listening to the news at the fire, particularly the Porter Ranch one now, people had notices to evacuate and chose not to and I know that that's an issue that we face every time. In your discussions with the city manager and with Captain Labarche, is that something that comes up and what can we say to residents? I have concern for resident safety. I also have concern for our sheriff's deputies and for firefighters that have asked people to leave to have to go back in there again because people chose not to leave. How do you address that?
Leave.
And, and that's it? And you tell them once and if they don't go, that's just too bad?
Then the sheriff will give them a notification for next to kid. I, it's, that's, it's very...
During a hurricane, tell people to write their social security number on their...
Right. But fire, if, you've seen the videotapes of the fire and there's, there's, you know, I definitely have, I'm very anxious and have a lot of anxiety during the fire because I have 1,300 firefighters out there in harm's way and the chance that one of them could become seriously injured or killed is very high. And for anybody that thinks it's the same mentality, "Ah, I've ridden out fires, I've ridden out hurricanes, it's not gonna get me." Well, they, they haven't been around fire enough to not respect it. So please, that's the message we get out is please leave.
I was down at, my school's right at the 5, 405, so I had both fires. Absolutely amazing, the helicopter wing aircraft choreography. There's no other way to say it. I mean, I must've saw anywhere from 12 or more at one time going, coming and going to the reservoir right there where you come down the 5. Absolutely amazing and I don't know if you could pass that on to them, but I sort of watched it. I was up on the second story like a little kid, like watching the airplanes, but it's amazing. I mean, how they get in and out without hurting each other or, I was just, it was spectacular. So those guys are really trained.
They are and they took a bumpy ride. I mean, when they're in the pass here and it's blowing 60 or 70, it's not a, it's an E-ticket and they're, it gets to a certain point, when it got up to 70, we couldn't bring in fixed wing air tankers. We had to rely on the helicopters because they were below the ridge tops where it was 70 to 80 and they couldn't fly over there. We have multiple layers of command on the ground and in the air that is choreographer for all that coordination. We immediately, when that fire broke, we took air assets that were over on our fire, immediately diverted them to the fire over here in Porter Ranch. Just like last year, we had the Malibu Fire going before the buckwheat. I just happened to be the incident commander, immediately sent air resources up there. So the incident commanders and also the different agencies, there's a great level of cooperation and that cooperation, we're pretty good on in Southern California because we do get a little practice if we're known as fires up here, so.
Chief, I'm gonna throw in one more aspect of the equation if I may and listening to Chief Freeman yesterday during one of the press conferences, he made reference to the unfortunate circumstance that some of these fires are purposely set. We've certainly seen that particularly last year with the buckwheat fire. There was a number of other fires that were set and I think they were readily determined that they were, that they were purposely set. And along with our public safety issues for the year, one of the things that we've talked about is being a good witness. Doesn't mean going out and making necessarily an arrest or something of that kind, but many of us living in our community have occasion to travel maybe some of the more rural areas that might be more prone to somebody wanting to set a fire, certainly as Placerita Canyon has experienced over there. And I just remind our citizens, particularly at this time of year when it seems to be occurring, be watchful and if you see a car pull alongside the road for no apparent reason and, you know, take stock, try to, try to get a physical description and maybe a car description. In a perfect world, obviously, we would have a license plate as well, but just in the event that we do have somebody up there setting fires, I'm certain that we don't have to explain the importance of getting these people where they need to be, particularly when we hear of the loss of life and the things that we know occasionally do in fact occur as a result, so.
I, I can't echo that enough. We had Monday night, we had five different starts coming down the 14 freeway. So, and where this fire started, there's no power lines, there was no lightning, it was a man-made fire at 2:00 in the morning. So the number, getting a car description, the car description and the license plate, any kind of car, that's the kind of clues we need to have so that our sheriff's department can put, you know, get somebody out of the business of starting fires.
Chief Tripp, thank you so much for taking your time and joining us tonight. We sincerely appreciate it. Stephanie, please let the troops know how much we appreciate their hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll do that. I'm sorry to jump in. I was remiss in one important subject matter related to our Fire Safety Month and that is smoke detectors. Please...
You invited everybody to go to the fire station. I heard that.
Yeah, well, not sure I have enough there, but you know, we would certainly assist in whatever we could do. Please make sure you have working smoke detectors in your homes and your kids' bedrooms throughout your house and change the batteries. Even the wired ones need battery changing and battery backup and they can be literally lifesavers.
lifesavers, so we just encourage you to install and make sure they're working. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll go to committee reports and council comments, and Lori, perhaps we can begin with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone, in addition to Fire Safety Month, it's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and if there is a woman in your life, your mother, your daughter, your wife, your girlfriend, your best friend, please remind her that this is a great time to schedule a mammogram. I think we can't talk about this enough this month. I would guess that probably everyone has somebody close to them who has had to confront breast cancer, and it's a good time for us to be really mindful that we take care of each other. There's an event this Sunday that's being sponsored by the local Seroptimus Group. It's Sit, Stroll, and Savor the Sounds. It's a wine affair on Town Center Drive, and it's to raise funds for the Sheila R. Velo's Breast Imaging Center, and I encourage anybody who's interested in some wine and some shopping to hit the mall on Sunday for that. There are other events throughout the month for all the different cancer groups and breast cancer groups in Santa Clarita and around the country, so I hope that you'll have a chance to participate in one of those, and again, just remind someone that you love to schedule their mammogram. That's it.
Thank you, Lori.